Thank you so much. Officially called this meeting to order. Start out with the roll call, Councilor London.
Present.
Councilor Spivey.
Present.
Councilor Beard.
I'm here.
Councilor Wilson.
Present.
And Moreno Beard. And y'all have had the minutes to review of both the regular council meeting and the pre-council, previous meeting. Any comments on those at this point?
I will just mention that I will abstain because I wasn't present. So what happened?
If there are no comments, is there a motion to accept the minutes as submitted?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next, we'll go to approval of bills for payment. We turn that to Councilor Spivey, please.
I make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of one hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred, thirty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents.
So it was one six five, four three one, point eight eight.
You got it.
I second that.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any professional or consulting reports tonight? All right. Mayor, any report for you, sir, or guest?
Just one reminder, one announcement. August the tenth, we have a town hall meeting. It's at the church at Grant's Mill, which is formerly First Baptist Church, Irondale Cross School, Shays Valley High School. It's at six P.M. on August the tenth.
Thank you. And do we have any department heads here tonight for reports? I do not see anyone present. Thank you. And we'll go ahead and start with the council reports, then, please. We'll start with Councilor London on your far end.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I just got two things. Just reminding everybody, bookbag giveaway this Saturday at two o'clock at Beacon Park, from two to four, two to five. Talk with the guy today, they got a lot of things for the young people. So if you know anybody in your neighborhood, period, just let them know. This Saturday, that's gonna be happening this Saturday. And also, last Saturday, we had the Rock Ridge Green Space dedication. It's one thing. Councilor Spivey, the hot dog. Moreno, being there, we're so excited that you guys were there. We had a good time. That hot dog cooker back there was so great, y'all showed up and had a fantastic time. And I tell you what, that neighborhood community is very excited about that green space. And these guys that were there can attest to that. Talking about, somebody was talking about having a football.
Absolutely.
Getting together out there or something like that. So it was a fantastic time. But they, I mean, just thank the council for allowing them to do that. The young lady that dedicated, did all the drawing of that park was there. And so we're just excited that it went down. So thank y'all, thank you guys. Thank you, Spivey.
Councilor Spivey?
Just to piggyback on that, great place. I had never been there before. That was my first time. I had the pleasure of going up there. Fantastic space itself of sunny rock up in Rock Ridge. Definitely recommend driving by and just kind of looking at it. And a couple of the officers were there. They joined us for kind of a little mini cop stop. Thanks for Ron, for letting us use your grill. And that's, it was just a really, really great day. And I think there can definitely be some football watched up there in the field. So that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilor Beard?
Thank you. I want to apologize for not being able to attend the last council meeting. My wife had hip replacement surgery the day before. I thought she's doing, doing well. The therapist had her walk down the steps to the mailbox yesterday. And so that was her first excursion outside of the house. But she's doing much better. She's seeming to be improving every day. On Sunday, the sixteenth, the day before her surgery, the Mount Hebron Baptist Church had their one hundred and twenty-sixth year anniversary celebration. And I went and attended that to, to see Mr. Spivey make a presentation of the plaque and speak. And after I'd been there an hour or forty-five minutes, no Mr. Spivey. And so everybody looked at me when it was his time to speak. So they did the only one.
I appreciate that. I spoke to the pastor about that.
But they had a good celebration and it was a good time.
I think I missed it.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Wilson?
I'm gonna make a quick, I don't even leave it on me. First, I want to thank the mayor for just responding to the emails I sent about some cleanup efforts in Holiday Gardens. I appreciate that. You and make sure you let Frank know, him and his guys and girls. Of course, I just want to put something on the council's mind as far as the vacancy that's being left at Grant's Mill Station since that home has moved. I know that a lot of you can remember, it was vacant many years at one time. We just want to keep that in our minds, in the back of our minds, because we don't want it to get back to where it used to be. Also, we want to, I know President Moreno mentioned as far as some of the projects that each one of us has as far as being chairs of certain committees. But I want us to see if we can look at cleaning some ditches behind the homes in Holiday Gardens. We're getting a lot of flooding in some of those areas, so we want to look at that. Also, want to mention the family fun day that Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association put on. It was a great event. We had a great turnout as far as some kids that showed up. Of course, some of the residents in the Holiday Gardens and Irondale community. And I want to thank Chief, Chief Ken for coming out also. We had a great time. Plus, as far as the backpack giveaway, that turned out well. I had a lot of kids, like I said, that came out. You know, I think there were some pictures out on Facebook. So I gave away a lot of backpacks and, you know, that was just, you know, it was real refreshing to see those kids come up and benefit from that. I think that's all that I have right now. I do want to address when it comes down before approval of the agenda, I would like to discuss in high order to the councilors, if you don't mind.
Thank you. Just to remind everybody, please, that the next council meeting for this month will be on the seventeenth of the month, because this room will be occupied due to election process going on on the fifteenth. So please remember, it will be at the same time, just different date. Also, at last night's work session, we did discuss doing another work session on that Monday, which is the fourteenth, before that meeting. So if you mark your calendars for that, please, also. If you've noticed lately, there is work going on on the infamous wall, I guess, at the Mount Brooksland tennis property that has started. It's starting to shape up. A lot of infrastructure workers, work still going on internally, but it is progressing. Also, know that as of today, the property on Grant's Mill Road that everybody passes repeatedly that has the A-frame house, known as the Tivito property, officially closed today and has sold to a developer. So that will be under process of having structure. We know one business, but again, till everything's settled, we know about all will be going in the structure when it's completed. That will be announced in a future date. But we do have a, a good potential going to the one side of the building at least. But again, a lot of room will be in that building when it's completed. Other than that, I have nothing else for this evening.
Would that information be communicated to the councilors also?
May I?
As far as the information? Would that communication be communicated to the council as far as development? Who is it?
When we get all of that, yes. Right. This is very clemmy, we just got a call from Butch, well, right before I came into the meeting, to let me know the property of Cooks. And we had been pending, but knowing that property had been close to something for the past probably ten years, and it had followed through at the last minute, didn't want to announce it till it was certain today, but it did close officially. And all we've met is just happened to have one of the potential clients that will be moving into the property, present with Butch, would let us know this afternoon. Again, do we have any reports now of boards or non-council committees?
Go ahead, your stamp.
Come on, please.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Lesley, and City Council. Just about three things I want to share with you on the Commercial Development Authority report. First item is that we have finalized our meetings with three different potential auditors that have come in to do an independent audit for us. And so that way, but the whole concept behind that is that we're at a point now of being proactive without the kind of foundation that the CDA is going to set for now and long forward in the future. So the issues that we've had in the past were, most of them are already in the rearview mirror, but we're trying to put them way, way, way back in the rearview mirror. So we met with Mark Hill Murphy, Shannon Smith. We've met with Juan Everett, and we've met with David Cork. So we had some scheduling issues with one of the firms. Cleared that up, so we finalized all the meetings, so we'll be getting back to you very soon with the final decision. The second thing I want to share with you is a happy opportunity to attend Economic Development Association of Alabama conference. And some great information came out of that. Darryl Washington was able to attend that conference, Aaron Sims was able to attend that conference. We're going to put together a comprehensive report to share with you all, so that you don't, you know, you don't have three different reports. We're just gonna put one together. May have some bullet points from each one of us individually, but once again, it's only one comprehensive report. One of the things I just wanted to share today is that one of the sessions that I sat in on had to do with foreign direct investment. There are actual federal dollars out there that we can get together with the industrial businesses of the city. And I believe even some of the commercial to do business with foreign companies. And they have those dollars set aside to actually take those business owners, those CEOs overseas and meet face to face, and they settle appointments. So that's just one of about three or four different, very, very valuable bits of information that come from being at that conference. The point person on that actually lives in Avondale, and you would love his session because he said, yes, I am technically a Fed, and I'm technically supposed to be concerned about all of the states in the United States, he said, but I am clearly only concerned about Alabama. So very, you know, high-energy kind of guy, and is the kind of person that I really think that we can develop a very strong relationship with. He's already helping Scott Green, a poker dog. So when I mention Irondale, he and a lot of other people have already heard a number of things that are going on here. So Irondale is definitely on the map, statewide. Oh, and in line with that, at the conference, they talked a lot about industrial development boards. And I can give what they actually call it, but basically what we have is the downtown redevelopment board. So I don't know all of where those boards are right now, but as soon as possible, if we can somehow or another get all of us together just to sit down and say, where are we? And put an outline together so that we can, you know, really get an economic, excuse me, economic development plan together to continue to move the city forward with what we've done so far. Last but not least, the next business that we're going to recognize for Business of the Month is Purple by the River. And the only reason it hasn't happened before now is because for anybody that doesn't know about Purple by the River, they have a very, very active lifestyle over there. For that, for that building to sit up there, you know, know very much about it, but when you sit down and talk to them, they have a lot going on. So we finally were able to get on their schedule. So we're gonna recognize them on August fifteenth, and that's gonna go from twelve to one P.M. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson?
Good evening. Ms. Reynolds?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Tellis Schumaker, Executive Director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to invite you to come to our August meeting. It is next Thursday, the tenth of August. Our guest speaker will be David Carrington, who is with the Jefferson County, Jefferson County Commissioner. And I just want to add that we did book him before he said he was running for governor. So this will be about Jefferson County, but I'd love for you to come. Eleven thirty to one o'clock at Country Country Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the four? Ms. Reynolds, yeah, no, ma'am. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the next, which is approval of the agenda. Ms. Wilson?
Yeah, kind of question, just to the councilors. Sorry I was late earlier coming in before we kind of opened and closed the pre-council meeting, but just want to ask a question as far as voting on the CDA applicants. Council President Moreno kind of mentioned we were waiting on an audit or something like that from David Cork or whatever, but we have had an audit. So I don't understand why we're still waiting, unless there's some kind of implications that I don't know about.
I'd like to sit down with the whole council and discuss each individual applicant in before we just vote, you know, like that discussion between the council members.
We only have three.
If I might, if I might respond next to that. David didn't do an audit that this year, had he?
No, they did a compilation.
Okay. Yeah, there's been no audit done.
Okay, David Cork didn't do any?
No. It's, David does an audit for the city. The CDA is a component unit of the city.
Right.
He has to include the CDA information into the city's audit, but the type of work that he performed in the accounting arena is called a compilation instead of a full-blown audit.
Okay. So waiting that will, I mean, that just, I mean, what is it, what is it that we're looking for? I mean, because everything has been out, so. I mean, y'all help me understand.
Sure, and that's, that's fair. My thing is, is the term's been up since March, right? So we've been kind of going month by month thus far. How long do you think it would take to pull this audit off of the CDA, the one we're talking about doing?
They interviewed them today, and depending on who they choose, Cork said three weeks, is that right?
Three weeks, if selected, could start next week.
Okay, so.
Again, CDA has a week for two more weeks.
If we've been going.
But now, a point of clarification, though, that each auditor that we met with, they seemed to, not seemed, they all indicated that when it comes to the CDA, that is more of a line item. So it's obviously not like doing the audit for the whole city. So I, while I understand what President Moreno was saying in terms of waiting for the information, but I also understand what Councilman Wilson is saying, is that what specifically are we waiting on? Because with, like I said, every auditor said that the CDA is more of a line item to the city as opposed to a major component of the city.
Right.
So, so I'm just offering that as part of the discussion.
My whole thing is, if we've been going month to month since March, what is really, honestly, another three, four weeks in order to, because we're about to make a decision that's going, that's gonna carry us another four years. And once we make this decision, this is really only, this is the only authority over the CDA that we have is by choosing these board members. And if we've got an audit that's, that we can have in about three to four weeks, that could maybe change our minds about something. And if I'm making a decision that I'm gonna have to deal with for the next four years, I want it to be the best informed decision I can. There's only one candidate that I'm comfortable in voting on right now. That would be Aaron Sims' position. If you would like to go ahead and do that, I'm more than happy, but I'm not prepared to move on Gerald's position at this time.
I'd like to sit down and discuss each individual candidate with the full council and have a consensus before we vote.
So, so I guess my question again, we don't have to be the dead horse, because I'm gonna go with the majority, but, but what are we looking for? Are we looking, do we have any implications? I mean, that's what I want y'all to tell me. Are we looking for something?
I just want to see the audit. I mean.
Okay. Because, because from my understanding, this audit is gonna go from, what, January sixteenth is it gonna start? January sixteenth?
I wasn't there today, Councilor Wilson, so when we interviewed the other two auditors, we said that because we were in the middle of the fiscal year, that they would do October twenty sixteen to September twenty seventeen.
Okay, so it's still being completed. So if that's the case, if we're looking for the audit to be completed in three or four weeks?
You would have to go back to twenty sixteen to have, to have a complete year.
Right. And through September of twenty seventeen, you said, correct? Oh, October, I'm sorry.
If you're going to do the current fiscal year, if you want to go back to this year, you'd have to go back to, was it October one of twenty fifteen to September of twenty sixteen?
So what is the timeline you're looking at?
Well, the reason that we had to do the presentations in fashion that we did is because it was very difficult to get every board member to every presentation. So we recorded them. So first and foremost, we still have to get everybody to sit down who has not been in all the presentations to actually see the videos that were done. Then, a decision on an auditor has to be made by us. We sent out information, because one of the auditors that we met with today, that was the last one, that's the one that had to be rescheduled. We met with him. So our office manager has already sent out the emails and made calls to get dates so that we could set, get, get a meeting as quickly and as soon as possible. So we just haven't gotten those replies yet. So I can't tell you just moment when that meeting's gonna be, but that meeting has to happen for everybody to see everything. Then there has to be a decision made. So you're right. Once that decision is made, then it's three weeks from then, but that could be two weeks from now, because we just haven't heard anything from, there are two people primarily that have just very, very busy work schedules. So we have to work around that.
Let me ask you, let me ask you, Mr. President, you served on the CDA with Darryl.
Thank you, and that's what I was getting to. I want to cut you off.
With Aaron. So I guess my question to you, is there anything, by you serving on the CDA, that throws a red flag to make sure that we, when we have to wait for this audit to?
I think at this point, we, I was not on the city council at the time it happened, but when we had the misappropriation of the eighty thousand dollars of funds, there was a red flag raised in the community. The CDA has been working toward eliminating any problems that would, so it would not reoccur.
Right.
I think in general, the public doesn't understand that once the city creates the CDA, it is a totally independent operating entity over which the city has no purview other than appointment of its members. What this audit would do is basically look at both operational parameters that have been put in place since that time, plus how the funds are currently being handled, and make recommendations to see that we are definitely in the right direction and we have the right people on the committee currently, at least for two positions that we have control of.
So my, so my question again, as a former member of the CDA, is are there any red flags that you've seen from your personal standpoint, you don't want to certainly?
I think last night, one of the questions that was proposed to each member is the CDA has an income of about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year based on the rest property.
Two hundred thousand.
So based on that, over the past, say, four years, that should amount to X amount of dollars. We have about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the bank. If the rest of that was spent, was that appropriate spending for that fund? Are we following state on what we can do? Because we have been contributing a lot to entities supporting different causes. Can a CDA legally do that under state statute? And that was part of the reason for the audit, to me.
So I guess this is a question for the last asked, the CDA attorney, I think, right? Correct? Is, is there, and your finding, are there anything that they spend on? Because I think you have to do all that, right? Anything that you've seen in the last few years?
There's been very little spending since I have been going to those meetings, at least that it's been brought to my attention. I did express concern about one project that was discussed last night, and that was the caboose project. And my advice was that that was not an appropriate use of CDA funds. There have been little to no other questions that have come to me about specific items.
Right.
But then, but what happened before I got there to go to those meetings, I don't know, I don't have a judgment on it, because I haven't been asked about those.
But I think, did we decide on that the boost? There was a way around that, that would make it appropriate?
The way that it could be done would be for the CDA to declare that it has excess funds and that none of those funds are committed, indebted to anyone else, and then those funds could come back to the city. And the city could perhaps use those funds. It's its city property, but that has never happened.
And just as a point of clarification, that Lesley shared with us as to where some of the bricks were put on, is that while she did share that it might not necessarily, oh, I'm sorry.
Come, 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 joy, I would like to hear.
Sorry about that. While it might not necessarily be a project that by state statute, the CDA can do, it was a project for enhancing the community. And what she stated was that once we appropriated those funds or gave them back to the city, that the city was not under obligation because we paid it to actually do the project. So it was at that point, CDA board member said, well, first of all, thank you, Lesley, for all the clarification. It was at that point that we said, well, let's step back and see if this is the best thing for us to move forward on. So the project at its inception was something that was going to enhance the caboose, because we have a number of people that come to Irondale, and they love our old train setup. So just so the community knows, this was about enhancement from the CDA. This wasn't anything negative. This wasn't anything that the CDA was gonna take money and go do something that was out of line. It's just that when it comes to state statutes, something as simple as enhancing a building, the state statute might say, that's not what a CDA should do. So what we're willing to do is give the money to the city, but then the city has to decide to go and do the project. And so what the attorney shared with us is that if we give the money, they're under no obligation to do it just because we gave. Does that make sense? Okay? So I just wanted to, you know, you make a very good point, see, that the community does need to understand the entire scope. So the city does need to know that their Commercial Development Authority, every day we wake up to enhance the city. Every day we wake up to add more businesses to the city. Every day, we try to take the businesses who are already here and find other ways to make them more profitable. So we have had some pickups in the past with other board members on this Commercial Development Authority. That is not the case now. We are more than happy and always hoping to work with the city in any way possible in order to move the city forward, because without strong business, then you don't have a vibrant business community. Without strong commercial development, you don't have additional tax revenue. So this is where we all have to work together to make this happen. Thank you.
And also, last night, since we only had part of the council here and then didn't have the full council here when we had the last interview, it would prove everybody to go review the interviews before we make any type of decision. That would be also something else to do.
Let me say this.
Because I think the interview is an essential part.
But let me say this. I've been here since two thousand and three. Everyone that comes through, I know, I've seen the people that interview, I've seen them at least twice in an interview. So with me not being here during the last interview, well, probably, probably two of the interviews, whatever it may be, I have been in a ton of interviews. I've studied several applicants. This is nothing new to me, nothing new as far as what we do. So therefore, I know the applicants, they've been here for some time, so I don't think that played any role. I don't think Council London's question was answered. Council Moreno, you, you spent several months or over a year on the CDA. Is there something that stands out that we're looking for to not allow us to go forward to vote on these applicants?
If you look at the amount of money spent for what we've got to show, and I mean, really show, and whatever is sitting out there other than on paper, things that we've done, I don't believe that money has been spent wisely in all cases. We can't track things like seven thousand dollars in seminars. That's a lot of money in seminars. Maybe we do need training, but again, that is public funds. We need to know if in going back, any seminar that was attended or any training session was attended, was approved by the board and not just attended at the whim of somebody wanting to go to a meeting. Those are the type of things that are required of state statute. All I can say now, rather than carry on the discussion, if you would like to call the question, to try to get it on the agenda, we could leave it up to the full council to take a vote on that and then have a further discussion. If that doesn't pass, where we actually sit down and call candidates. Again, that would be a public meeting.
Well, like I said, that's up to the councilors.
But you're watching, call the question for the agenda.
Yeah, I just had a question. That's all. But I still say you had a, you had enough time. If there was any questions or anything in doubt, you had enough time to answer those, you know, ask those questions.
And again, it wasn't put on the agenda for tonight. Again, like David, we've got time. I guess the other question is, why not wait for the audit? Well, because we've never had a full audit of the CDA, and we've had now two separate incidents with the previous CDA and the current CDA where we've had issues.
Now, remember, you was on there.
And even Mr. Washington in his presentation last night indicated this, hopefully this audit would put them on a level playing field where they could start and make sure everything is in place.
Let's not forget, you was on that CDA.
I was on the CDA, yes, sir.
All right. Um, let's move forward. Do we need to, do we need to put it on, or you want to wait?
I'm not prepared to vote on that position.
Okay, you're not? I know you're not. So three, two. That's fine. Let's move forward.
Alright, thank you. Since there are no items on the agenda tonight to discuss, are there any general public comments? If you do come forward on a public comment, please be sure and hand the form to our city clerk, and remember that you please have three minutes to do your presentation. Please.
Ooh, rock on. Um, my name's Lynn Marina, I'm president of the Irondale Arts Council, and we have started Irondale Rocks, they talked about it last night, the city is full of rocks, and we wanna share the goodness of Irondale. So you're going to be seeing rocks around the city. And what we want you to do is pick them up, enjoy them, enjoy the message, take a picture of it, and tag the Irondale Arts Council, and then put it again in a public place. Please do not put them in private property without their permission, if you're a business owner. We'd love to have your rocks, and it'll spread the word about the businesses. We've got, um, Iron City Stone and Supplies donating the rocks free, so I don't have to go to Michael's to buy them. Um, Chick-fil-A is partnering with us, we're gonna go paint with the cow. We've had several neighborhoods and the Arts Council and just general people painting rocks. We went to the library and painted rocks. We've got Student Art Night, it's gonna be August the thirtieth, where kids are gonna come paint. They're gonna paint at the Senior, Senior Center. Um, we've got Irondale Rocks with tiaras on them going to the Miss Alabama, Miss Senior Alabama pageant as a giveaway, so they can start it in their community. Um, people have seen the big cows everywhere made out of fiberglass in a lot of communities. Well, we just don't have seven thousand dollars for a blank canvas. So we're getting the free canvas, which is the rocks, so.
And I got the first rock thing to have your picture with.
There you go. But if you find, I mean, you really like it, you can keep the rock, just replace it with another painted rock and an inspirational message. All the city councilman, the mayor, our attorney, Chamber of Commerce, even our videographer back there has been giving rocks for them to, to place. So I wanna challenge all of you, go home and get creative and share the word about Irondale. There, there's a lot of goodness that we have, and we just don't spread it enough, so. And it's not original, but the Irondale Arts Council is not that brilliant. We didn't come up with this idea, we're just using it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else, please? Please.
Me?
Yeah, please.
Here's my letter piece of paper.
Thank you.
Uh, Connie Wade, two two three five, Mountain Road, um, Harvard ordinance. I've got four different opinions in the last few weeks, and I'm going to pass this out. One is about when does it start? The other one is about clarification of what we're gonna put. Hold on, I got one.
Thank you.
That's not the whole word, it's, it's just that one word. So, I've been told that, it went into effect when y'all voted on it. I've been told, note, according to the paper, it's August twenty first, as you say, I would, so which is it?
There's always the twenty first.
Public Works and Public Works employees will take you notes the day you sign it. So that needs to be clarified.
Okay, we put out, this information you got here is correct, that it changes what? It went, I mean, the council approved it whenever they did, two months ago.
Right.
But to give time, and we said this specifically, it's time to give time to publicize it, let everybody know, make sure that the word got out, that we would implement it, at that time, we said sometime in August, and the date was set August the twenty first.
Okay.
This is correct.
It's misleading several people as to when it is starting. When you've been telling, the twenty first, then you've been telling, it's been told, note the date.
I was, I was told by the Public Works myself that it, uh, that everything except the once a week went into, uh, into effect since the mayor signed it. So they were not picking up any, uh, they, they were, they were on the impression that, uh, everything, the trash, the, the garbage, the debris, and everything went into effect except for the one they picked up.
Well, and that's what I was referring to on August the twenty first.
Yeah, so it all, so it doesn't go into effect until the twenty first, they need to be made aware of that.
Okay, alright, and then, if you look at page two, or maybe page three, I don't know. Um, number four, about the any degree. I've been told, there are four or five different opinions on this. If a resident takes down wood, a wood fence, um, is that not gonna be picked up anymore? Because it's been picked up in the past, and this says a contractor. If you're a resident, you're not a contractor from working in your own yard.
Well, if a contractor breaks it down and put it out there...
I agree, and I've got it out this morning, and I said, you know, your contractor's gotta take that.
Yeah, they'll pick it up.
But if it's an, if it's a resident that's working in his yard and rents equipment or does it by hand and takes it to the road...
Yeah, pick it up.
They're not.
They're not picking it up. Mr., Mr. President, I would, uh, ask that the three minute, uh, limit would be extended so that we can discuss this.
If you'd like to continue.
Right.
Alright, I've got pictures of the fences she's talking about, um, that's, that's been put on the, on the street.
I mean, in the past, it's been picked up, and now it's not being picked up, and again, it's, it's gotta be clarified.
Mr. President, I make a suggestion that, um, Councilman Beer can get it with the mayor, because, because I have...
Do you have your...
I've asked himself, and I just, I just contacted the mayor on email and got a picture, you don't mind?
And that, that's okay with you as well, and I think the other thing we did find out in the process of redoing this, that over the years, the city had not been enforcing their own ordinance. A lot of this was never changed, a lot of what you're seeing in the ordinance was always there.
Right.
There wasn't change, just the size and material picked up, et cetera. But again, uh, between the mayor and, um, whoever represents your district, you can address individual issues if you need to.
Well, yeah, we just need, I mean, if you're right around my neighborhood right now, there's several piles that they're picking and choosing, and that's what we wanna know. And, you know, are, are we gonna quit picking it up? Or, we've always picked it up, so, and that doesn't make it right, I agree. The ordinance may have not been enforced the way it should have been. But, I don't read anything in that ordinance that says a, a resident cannot do this, because he's not a contractor, he's not, nobody's paying him, unless it's right, or maybe...
And again, I think that can be resolved with the mayor following up with Public Works, that's not a problem.
So, so we're, we, we'll get it picked up?
That's up to the mayor, ma'am, we do not directly employ the city.
We'll talk to him about showing the pictures after, after his council meeting.
Okay, because I've got several neighbors that are here that need to speak on the same thing, or we get it not to speak on?
As long as they get with the mayor and follow up, he'll be glad to follow with Public Works for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time, appreciate that. Do we have anything on any other subject along that line, or, since you've heard what we said there, if that's something you were speaking on? Yes, ma'am, please. Uh, but still, if you would, please, before you leave, would you fill it out and turn it into change? Thank you very much. Thank you, you know who she is.
Yeah, that's beautiful, she's a, she's a regular.
Yeah, I'm one of those, but, but, um, a lady cut down a tree, I don't know if she had a contract or what, but it just, it's just a month now, so I, that's what I was coming for too. Uh, they picking it up, uh...
Where is it located, what's the address?
On Third Avenue, straight down Third Avenue, just a tree, it's been sitting there for a while. And they picked up trash the other day, but they left that.
She cut it down herself, or she has someone else?
I don't, that's what I don't know.
Okay, the big thing is if, if a contractor did it, the contractor should be taking that material with them. That's, that's part of what you pay for, you know, when you have a service like that done. And one of the big things is we're having issues with contractors that are, you know, oh yeah, I'll do this for X amount of dollars, and they're not taking their, their stuff with them. Happened in my neighborhood recently too, and I was just, I was beside myself when I saw where they put the debris, uh, put it in a ditch, which was brilliant. Um, but, yeah, I mean, that's, that's one, that would be the big question, was, did they cut it down themselves? Because I agree with you, if they did cut it down themselves, then that would be something that I feel Public Works would need to take.
Why didn't they knock on her door and let her know, you know, something to be done about that? But I know it come out of her house, out of her yard.
Yeah, if the contractor did it, they should have taken it with them.
Okay.
David, can I ask you a question regarding the contractor? Is that just, um, a mandate of a contractor? Or, or can a contractor say, I'll charge you a hundred dollars to cut it, fifty dollars to carry it away, but if you only pay a hundred, then I leave it?
And don't get me wrong, there's, there's probably some ignorance, you know, or miss, lack of education on the ordinance, that somebody's gonna go, absolutely, if I can save fifty bucks, and the city's gonna pick my stuff up, then absolutely.
Right. So, so let me give you, let me give you an example, I mean, it's, it's really a simple thing. A homeowner, a typical homeowner, there are very few in here that have a tree down like this, this is bigger. And, yeah, there's an exception to everything, but very, very few in the city. I had a tree cut down on my property. I was told by the, one of the people that I got an estimate from, I'll charge you X amount of dollars, and I'll haul it to the street. I said, well, you gotta haul it off. He said, no, you don't, he said, the city will pick it up. He didn't know I was the mayor, you know. I said, I don't, no, they won't pick it up. Anyway, so I ended up with a different, with a different contractor, I ended up hiring him to do it, and it cost me about three hundred dollars more. I gotta quote, I think, six hundred and fifty dollars to cut the tree down, nine hundred and fifty dollars to haul, to cut it down and haul it off. I paid it, but, you know, it's, it's not for me to ask the city to pay for my work that I have done. And so, it's, it's a responsibility we have. Now, we have parameters, certain sizes that are reasonable that a homeowner might be able to cut down, some homeowners. And so we wanted to the size that, that is something that, we're not gonna argue about whether a contractor did or not. Before, the old ordinance, it was rather subjective, I think the contractor might have cut it down. We said, if yours fits in the size that the ordinance states, we'll haul it off, you know? Now, if we know that a contractor cut down this mess size, then it's still the contractor's responsibility. But we're not gonna argue with you, if, if it fits in there, and you tell us that you cut it down, we're gonna pick it up and we're gonna haul it off. But otherwise, it's the responsibility of the homeowner for their property, for their tree, for their, their debris, to, to have their contractor that they pay to haul it off.
Yeah, but she goes this across the street.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, they do that, yeah.
You know, like, like, off her property.
No, yeah, she put it on somebody else's property, which is a separate issue that she shouldn't have done as well.
We had some recently placed in the street, so...
Yeah, it's falling off in the street, y'all saw it.
But, again, anything of that nature, especially when it involves...
Councilor, Councilor Wilson sent me, what, about four, um, different types of piles of debris. Uh, I think maybe, I forget the number, one of the four was something that we should pick up, and we did pick up. One was already gone by the time that we got there. And the other, we talked to, we talked to the homeowner there and explained that to them, and they agreed that, you know, I mean, this, this log was this big around, sitting on top of another logs, and there's no way that a homeowner could have done it. And they just had the contractor, probably with their bucket, haul it up there, dump it on the street, and, and so the city will come pick it up. So, I mean, I, I think all of us agree that, you know, there are certain things we should do and certain things we shouldn't do. Public Works is gonna follow this, ordinance is gonna be all changed.
And, oh, I have one more, and I just wanna thank Mr. Frank Gamm, they did a fantastic job, water's flowing, bang, so I just wanna thank you.
Oh, thank you so much, I'm sure he appreciates that. Anyone else in the audience tonight?
I am, um...
Yes, ma'am.
I'm next to you, I'm up there. We had a tree get by light, and, um, I think, um, Saturday, and, um, and then it fell on Monday and blocked enough the power, a hundred homes were on the park. And Public Works was there before our local power was. Clean, and they already cleaned two other trees, I think they said that had been hit by lightning. But they, I said, that's service, they were there, cleaned up before our local power got there, and I'm like, that's great. So I wanted to, and I told Frank, and I don't know if they told him that or not.
Thank you for passing it on to Frank.
I forgot to tell you all that, because, I mean, they big guy with their power, come on.
Well, well, that, that doesn't take much to beat our, our power, you know.
Well, our local power...
I work for the city.
Okay.
You get home, your life's out.
Any other comments or suggestions from the audience? If not, I will accept the motion to close the meeting. Second, all in favor? Aye, thank you. Appreciate everyone coming tonight, thank you so much.